I get it.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
It's not talking about most of the time.
Yeah.
So it's him.
Him.
So it's him.
He's watching.
I don't think so.
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 Yeah.
No, you're not.
No, I'm not.
No, I'm not.
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 He's a decent fellow.
I've seen him do something.
He's somebody you'd want to work for.
I'd work for him.
He gets to make sense.
He's such a bad.
Yeah.
He's such a bad guy.
Yeah.
He's a good chance.
He's a good chance.
He's got his license.
He's got his license.
He's got his license.
Twice.
He's got his white tee.
Yeah.
Probably just because he's the number one.
Yeah.
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 Two, I should get some.
Yeah.
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 Well, it's eight hours.
It's hard enough.
When you work.
Oh, by the time you get home and wind down?
No shower.
Exactly.
You know.
Exactly.
You get five, six hours.
Yeah.
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 Um, I have a, he was just looking at flowers out of there.
Who?
Um, I have a.
Ian took a bunch.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
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 He's on the conversation.
Yeah.
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 And then.
Yeah.
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 No, they wouldn't, no, but that's, that's fine.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm.
Yeah.
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 Obviously, in the last year.
Yeah.
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 Guys.
Yeah.
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 One minute.
Hello.
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 Yeah.
Yeah.
I wouldn't share either.
Looked at it.
Yeah.
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 Excuse me.
Yeah.
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 Thirty seconds.
Of course.
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 So, yeah, if we could just maybe talk to Parks or the who runs that there, clarify that.
Thank you. Counselor Lauter.
Through the mayor, just a comment. This seed program at the library has been quite successful.
Yeah, that's great.
And it's really doing well. So, thanks for your input into that.
Thanks. Thanks for your comment. And we've had a couple of, again, Tom, who seems to have been doing everything, a couple of speaker series with people who've come in to identify how to save seeds so that hopefully when people take them out in the spring, they'll know how to save them and bring them back in the fall to keep the library going. So, that's been successful too. So, thanks.
Further questions of council? Seeing none. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Keep up the good work.
Thanks again, everyone. Thanks.
Our next item on the agenda is Kate Leatherborough regarding prohibiting graphic imagery in public space. Welcome.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I would like to begin with thanking the city councillors and your worship for allowing me to present a very important topic to you all today. This past November, I was leaving a local playgroup with my children and we were heading home for lunch when we approached the major intersection at Dundas and Norwich Ave where we were greeted with a very large sign that a young activist was holding. On that sign was a graphic gory image of an aborted fetus. This image was covered in blood, death, and hate, and it was disturbing to an adult, let alone a small child. I have never encountered this form of protesting where an organization in the middle of the day without warning may use such disturbing images to get their message across. My first step was to contact City Hall and make an appointment with our mayor. I was able to set up an appointment with him for December fourteenth at ten a.m. To my surprise, when I told his secretary and when I had reached out to a city councillor to explain what I had witnessed the day before, neither of them were aware that this organization was in our city, let alone portraying and distributing these images. From there, I took it to social media to see what kind of response I would receive on this topic. I had plenty of Woodstonians that sided with me to say, regardless of your message, these images are in fact inappropriate for any child to see in a public space. Furthermore, I had community members contact me to bring my attention to the fact that this same organization was also distributing flyers to private residences and that their children were getting the mail and opening these pamphlets to see a much gorier image of a chopped up aborted fetus. I decided I was going to begin a petition that would ask the city of Woodstock to enact a bylaw prohibiting graphic imagery in a public space. Once the petition took off, I was approached by many suggesting I make it an online petition rather than paper because I would receive more signatures that way. I happily declined so I could tell you all today that every person that has signed my petition agrees that something must be done and that we seek help from you, our council. I also wanted to be sure to only collect signatures from people that lived in Woodstock so that I knew I was informing those people exactly what I was after and to remind them that I was not fighting the topic of abortion or all pro-life groups. I decided to write a letter to the Agriculture Society to ask if I could bring my petition to the farmers market. I received word that I was allowed to attend and seeing as they are a nonprofit organization, I did not want their reputation to be perceived any different or that they had a say in my cause. So, I showed up with only my petition and an article that The Sentinel Review wrote outlining my quest. To be able to speak to community members from all walks of life, I was pleasantly surprised with the support I was given. In three short weeks, I was making great strides. I had contacted Joyce Arthur from the executive that was the executive director from Abortion Rights Coalition, and she and her organization informed me that we are not the only municipality that is being tormented by these images. I did some further research on who was responsible for these images. The organization is called Canadian Collection for Bioethical Reform, also known as the CCBR. This organization has received a lot of attention on their End the Killing campaign that they began in two thousand and eleven and hoped to run until two thousand and twenty-nine, which would make it an eighteen-year campaign. They believe that showing Canadians the truth behind abortion will stop abortion altogether and furthermore get political attention to make abortion illegal. To name a few regions in Canada that have been reported in the news for fighting against the CCBR and their graphic imagery are Grand Prairie, Alberta, Peterborough, Ontario, and mostly recently Toronto. When this topic is brought to the courts, the judges have deemed this imagery as fearful and confusing among children and that these images may cause psychological harm to women who have had a miscarriage, stillborn, or an abortion. Before all of this fell into my lap and into the personal space of my children, I can honestly say I did not have a stance on pro-life campaigns. If anything, I believe I am a person that can respect anyone with a passion to better our world regardless of different political backgrounds. That being said, I will say to you now that all the CCBR does not speak for all pro-life groups. In my opinion, they have harmed most organizations that wish to share their thoughts on pro-life by taking freedom of expression to this level and abusing it. We as Canadians often recite freedom of speech when we are faced with someone that disagrees with what we are trying to say or show. I strongly believe that this imagery is to instill fear, guilt, and judgment upon Canadians. Freedom of speech and expression is not absolute. More specifically, the Charter allows the government to pass laws that limit free expression so long as the limits are reasonable and can be justified in a free and democratic society. We as a municipality can pass a, just a minute, we as a municipality cannot pass a criminal law, but we may enact a bylaw to better govern and protect our children and community members. Other cities have taken action to design a bylaw to protect children based on the Advertising Code in Canada, where under section fourteen, unacceptable depictions and betrayals highlight that these images are breaking the code. Furthermore, I have contacted the Advertising Standards of Canada, and they have documented complaints filed against the CCBR and that the CCBR has chosen to ignore those complaints and continue to plaster and distribute graphic images of aborted fetuses across Canada. This showing us the disregard and lack of respect for children and community members. Woodstock needs to be progressive and support other municipalities on this topic, so we are not forced to stand by and allow any fanatics into our city and into the lives of our children. To summarize my goal, I would like to again state that this is not about abortion. This is about having the right to censor what our children will view, whether it be in the media, in our homes, or in our public space. Limiting this protesting tactic does not stop any organization from continuing on their quest to promote their cause, but it would challenge them to educate in a more positive and less aggressive way. I would like to thank every single person in this room for listening to me tonight. When I began this fight, I wanted to be sure to remain true to myself and to remember to be tasteful and respectful, and I am thrilled to know that I did just that. I did not push my opinion on anyone. I did not force anyone to look at this imagery, and I did not paint everyone with the same brush. I strongly believe that this has proven to be a much more successful way for any type of change, and we need to lead by example.
Thank you. Questions of council? Counselor Acioni?
Through your worship, Kate, let me start off just by saying thank you. You did reach out to me. I was one of the, probably one of the first ones to respond, I believe, when you commented about it going on. And I was out of town. I had no idea.
For sure.
I have seen some of the images since. Certainly not comfortable with them myself either. Though my kids are older, I could certainly understand where they're coming from. So, I just want to say thanks and do respect what you've done here in the community, the way you've done it. I think has been quite tasteful going around and getting the signatures and of course, reading all the comments on social media. You've got a lot of people behind you as well, so I just want to say good job.
Thank you very much.
Questions of council? Seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our next delegation is Dennis La Chasseur regarding the waste depot operations. I don't know if I got the pronunciation right.
Nailed it. Thank you. So, I'm Dennis. Amongst other things, I'm the president of the Canadian Union of Public Employees or QP eleven forty-six. We represent over five hundred employees in the city of Woodstock and Oxford County. We also represent more than eighty thousand workers in the province of Ontario across many different municipalities. One of the sectors those workers are part of is the waste management sector. So, it kind of positions QP in a unique spot to advise on how to handle solid waste. I don't think I told you I'm speaking to recommendation B two about the waste depot. So, our first point, it's been our experience that these types of facilities are best managed by municipalities and their workers. It's our local governments that can provide the most valuable and oversight to such a core service. It's especially true that new provincial legislation is being rolled out that's going to put new rules on materials processed at our depot. The new legislation will make polluters pay for materials they produce, and as a result municipalities will soon be compensated even more than they already are for dealing with blue box recyclables. It seems that the cities ignored this changing landscape as it relates to contracting out the work at our new depot. Waste diversion is a goal of our community, and we should not leave that to private contractors motivated to find the cheapest solution for recycling our materials. My second point is it's puzzling for me to consider that building a brand-new facility in our community, the new depot, is simply to contract it out, to service, contract out the services that we're going to provide it with. I'm not sure, it's a corporate handover of a facility that was built for our community with resident tax dollars. I can't understand why this council would consider a subsidy for a large for-profit waste operator while we retain all the risk. There's a lot of questions to be answered before council should move ahead with any contracting out of this depot. Amongst them, some of them are, what's the cost-benefit analysis of handling over potential, excuse me, what's the cost-benefit analysis of handling over potential profits of the operation to provide for-profit operator? What implications exist under the new legislation for the municipality? What would affect any agreements with polluters that will now have to pay for the waste to be processed at the depot? Is this completely in line with the purchasing bylaw? We're not clear how the tender process concluded. For example, was there only one bidder for the proposal? Why did staff not go back and fully explore other options and seek council direction? And do we know the contractor has not had past infractions in other jurisdictions or with private customers? It's cheaper to bury garbage, and Woodstock needs to ensure appropriate oversight for the materials at the depot so they don't just end up in landfill. Depots like this one have a number of challenges associated with them. No tender or process can anticipate everything. Ultimately, issues from odor to fires are going to be the city's responsibility. This is especially true since the city owns it. At the base, why doesn't the city want to operate its own facility and make absolutely sure that we're responsible for the services we're providing for the needs of the residents? The forum right now, I'm sorry, we don't have enough time to go through all the different issues here, was a big RFP, so we can't really go through everything piece by piece. But with a changing landscape of solid waste processing, we suggest that council take time and enter into discussion with the union to adequately and appropriately provide the service at this new asset. And you guys will notice, there's a fact sheet that I've given you, or a brief, that's attached to the agenda also, that kind of gets into these specific things a little bit more if you're interested. Thank you.
You. Questions of council? Counselor Tate?
Just a couple of comments, and I have to apologize. It's been a crazy week with meetings. And to be fair to the city engineer, with this council, we're very conservative in our spending, and I think probably the reason initially looking at contract, you know, was probably because it was cheaper. Looking at it, I don't agree with that, and I'm going to ask for a deferral once it gets to it, if I can get enough support, because I think we need the total costs. And I think in discussions, probably if we had city staff, we hired the city staff for it, we could probably use them for other work around the city than just the recycling depot. Is that not correct?
That's, it's your city. But yeah, I would imagine that's the case, right? Yeah, I don't understand why you guys would miss that opportunity.
I think, like, to be fair, I think we were looking at, the city engineer is probably looking at the most cost-effective way, and the contracting looks like it's most cost-effective way, but potentially it could not be because we could use the staff for other jobs down the road. And I have to apologize. I should have asked some of the questions before we got to tonight, but we will. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go with Counselor Petter first, then Shapton.
Through the mayor. Dennis, I just want to thank you for your presentation, and as Counselor Tate mentioned, we're going to get into this later, but I have one big question for you.
Forty-two.
Am I in forty-two? My days in my union days, how in the world do you get so many guys to a union meeting? You never see this. Did you, like, offer them a bribe or what?
No free food, nothing. These guys are just very, very interested in this.
Counselor Shapton?
Thank you, your worship. Just more of a comment, and through to Dennis. I really appreciate what you put in writing, and it certainly raised questions that I didn't even consider before this. Reading the report, it's pretty clear that the report was created, and no fault to the city engineer without all of the information that's required to get this done. At no point am I willing, right now, to contract anything out without all of the information. And I think similar to what Counselor Tate said, we're far better off staffing it with our own people than we are with an outsourced company.
Thank you.
Further questions of council? Seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Consideration of delegations. One more. Oh, we have a planning. Yes, sorry. That was the one we added to the agenda. So, McKinnon and Associates regarding the zone change at Oxford Road seventeen. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, your worship, members of council. My name is Aaron Hill with McKinnon and Associates. I'm here on behalf of Thames Developments, which is the owner and the applicant for phase four of the North Woodstock Lands Development. It's, there'll be a planning report presented very shortly as part of your, the next item on the agenda. And really, I'm just here to say that I'm here on behalf of the owner. I am available to answer any questions that may arise likely, most appropriately after the report is presented, but, and we're in full support of the report as presented and again, available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of council at this point? We can save them for when we get to item eight D. Thank you for being here.
Yep.
Now, consideration of delegations. Counselor Lauter?
I'll move that Woodstock City Council receive the presentation from why not us as information.
Thank you. And a seconder, Counselor Shapton. You've heard the motion. All those in favor? Carries unanimous. Next item on the agenda, we, Counselor Shapton?
I move by myself that Woodstock City Council receive the presentation from the Woodstock Environment Advisory Committee as information.
Thank you. And seconder, Counselor Acioni. You've heard the motion. All those in favor? Carries unanimous. Next item on the agenda, Counselor Acioni?
I'd like to make the motion that we request the provincial and federal government enact legislation regulations, whereas various groups are entitled to publicize their viewpoint and position in keeping with the freedom of expression, subject to section one limitations under the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms. And whereas these groups should be able to mount an effective campaign in a way that is not deeply troubling for children in a way that does not cause unnecessary discomfort or anguish to other vulnerable persons in the community, and whereas these campaigns can be undertaken in a manner that provides appropriate protection for children and other vulnerable persons from graphic and gory imagery, sorry. Now, therefore, be it resolved that City of Woodstock Council requests the Government of Canada and the province of Ontario to consider enacting legislation and/or regulations in all aspects of the particular jurisdictions dealing with advertising and communication to prevent the use of extremely graphic, gruesome, disturbing images in display materials, signs, advertising, posters, banners, and other mediums as part of any campaign, at least to the extent that such images are shielded from children and other vulnerable persons. And can I add that last part with the monitor the development in the city of Toronto? That Woodstock City Council direct. Staff to monitor the city of Toronto discussion regarding the distribution and display of graphic images and report back to council with an update. Thank you.
Thank you. Seconder, Counselor Lauter. Discussion. Counselor Petter?
I'd like to speak in favor of the motion. I agree wholeheartedly with the presentation that went on. Unfortunately, I'm not an expert in the Charter of Rights and Freedoms, and I think we need help seeing what's going on in Toronto and seeing what's going on in the rest of the centers before we can possibly do a bylaw that could help this situation and then end up with a lot of cost to the city as far as the legal side of it goes. So, I'm in favor.
Further discussion? Seeing none. You've heard the motion. All those in favor? Carries unanimous. Next item on the agenda is consideration of planning reports. Looking for a motion, Counselor Petter?
I move that Woodstock City Council approve the application for zone change file number ZN eight seventeen twenty-three submitted by Wayne and Margaret Leonard for lands described as part lot seven concession two Blanford in the city of Woodstock whereby the lands are to be proposed to be rezoned from agricultural zone A two to special agricultural zone A two S P to permit a single detached dwelling. And further, the comments received from the public were considered in council's decision to deny the application. Almost forgot.
Okay. And a seconder, Counselor Shapton? Ms. Hasler, welcome.
Thank you. So, the first application was submitted by Wayne and Margaret Leonard, and it's for lands located on the west side of Blanford Grove between Highway four oh one and Township Road two. The application for a zone change is, proposes to rezone the subject property from agricultural zone to special agricultural zone to permit a single detached dwelling. The proposed amendment will facilitate the replacement of the existing temporary mobile home on the property with a permanent single detached dwelling. For council's information, the single detached dwelling was located on the property from nineteen eighty-two to two thousand and eight before being destroyed by a fire. In accordance with provisions of the zoning bylaw, the applicants were entitled to replace the previous dwelling within one year of destruction. At the time, the applicant's original dwelling was destroyed. The city was completing the East Woodstock Secondary Plan for the lands that were being incorporated into the city from Blanford Blenheim Township in two thousand and five as part of the Toyota lands boundary adjustment. The secondary plan identified that the area east of Highway four oh one and north of Highway two was for potential employment lands. However, the lands were not designated for employment purposes at that time. In light of the potential, the current applicant decided not to develop, sorry, decided not to rebuild the house and requested a temporary use bylaw for a mobile home in the meantime. The city granted that in November two thousand and eight. I should mention too that the subject property is located on forty acres of land and is predominantly wooded with a provincially significant wetland. The PPS directs that these natural features, including provincial, provincially significant wetlands and significant woodlots, shall be protected. The UTRCA reviewed this application, and they were satisfied that the applicant's dwelling, if this were approved, that the dwelling is far enough away from the provincially significant wetland and the woodlot. And they asked that if the application were approved, that the dwelling, the proposed dwelling, be situated in the same footprint and not be located any closer to the natural features. Whilst planning staff are generally satisfied with the natural heritage policies and that they will be maintained, staff are, have concerns that the property is in the prime agricultural area. In this respect, as the proposal facilitated construction of a single detached dwelling, it is not accessory to an agricultural use. It is therefore not supported by the policies of the PPS. Further, the property was subject to the East Woodstock Secondary Plan, which identifies the lands as future employment use. In this regard, the PPS directs that employment areas shall be planned for future and current uses. While the property is not intended to be designated for industrial purposes in the near future, these lands are to be protected to meet long-term employment needs. In light of the foregoing, staff are not supportive of the application as the proposal, as the proposal is generally not consistent with the PPS or the intent or purpose of the official plan.
Thank you. Questions of council? Counselor Acioni?
Through your worship, to Andrea, guess, though we spoke about this earlier in the week, of course, at our other meeting, I just want to be, this council doesn't usually go against any policies or anything else, but in this situation, so the public knows, because of the house that was there before, this family unfortunately has gone through a fair bit of, you know, call it hardship for lack of a better word, because if their house had never burned down, obviously, they'd never have an issue. So, and that's the biggest reason why I'll be supporting this, denying the way it's written right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions of council? Seeing none. You've heard the motion. All those in favor? Carries unanimous. And the next item. Who would like to make a motion? Counselor Lauter?
I'll move that Woodstock City Council approve the recommended zoning bylaw amendment file ZN eight seventeen dash twenty for lands comprising part lot three, plan M forty-one M eighty-two, part lot eighteen concession two, east Oxford in the city of Woodstock whereby the lands be rezoned for general industrial zone M three to special regional commercial zone C six dash S P to permit a boat, motorcycle, motorhome, snowmobile, or travel trailer sales and service establishment on the subject property. And further, that comments received from the public were reviewed and were considered in council's decision to approve the application.
Counselor Acioni. Ms. Hasler?
Thank you. The next application for a zone change is for lands located on the north side of Montclair between Longworth Lane and Norwich Avenue. The application for zone change proposes to rezone the subject property from general industrial zone to special gen, sorry, special regional commercial zone to permit a boat, motorcycle, motorhome, snowmobile, or travel trailer sales and service establishment on the subject property. The applicant has also requested to permit the full range of uses in the C six zone. The subject lands comprise approximately two hectares or five acres and are currently vacant. The applicant is proposing to establish a building with an area of approximately ninety-six hundred square feet, as well as parking, storage, and display areas in support of the proposed use. As the proposal would promote redevelopment of an existing brownfield site, efficient use of existing infrastructure, a mix and range of employment uses, and diverse economic base, planning staff are satisfied that the proposed development is consistent with the policies of the PPS respecting employment uses within designated settlement areas. In accordance with the policies of the official plan, it's intended that the individual uses may be permitted on sites within Norwich, the Norwich and Juliana Regional Commercial Node through a site-specific zoning. Further, a site-specific official plan amendment subject to the preparation of a retail market impact study will be required to facilitate development in excess of twenty thousand square feet. In this case, planning staff are of the opinion that the proposed use generally falls within the scope of retail warehouse use or auto supply store. In addition, as the proposed development will not exceed the maximum permitted gross floor area, an official plan amendment will not be required at this time. To ensure consistency with the policies, planning staff are recommending that a special provision be included in the proposed zoning to limit the total gross floor area to twenty thousand square feet. While staff are satisfied that the proposed use generally conforms to the relevant policies of the official plan, the policies of the regional commercial node development are clear that a range of uses are to be determined through a market impact study and reflected and implemented through the zoning provisions for each site. In this case, the staff are supportive of the applicant's proposed use, but would recommend that if the full range of uses were permitted, that at that point a market impact study would be required. In light of the foregoing, staff are satisfied that the proposal can be supported.
Thank you. Questions of council? Seeing none. You've heard the motion. All those in favor? Carries. And next item, Counselor Shapton?
Thank you, your worship. Move by myself that Woodstock City Council approve the proposed zoning bylaw amendment file ZN eight dash one seven dash two one for lands comprising part lot one seven concession two Blanford in the city of Woodstock to rezone the subject lands from neighborhood institutional zone to special residential zone three, R three dash thirty-two, to facilitate the development of twenty-six townhouse units and four semi-detached dwelling units on the subject lands. And further, that the comments received from the public were reviewed and were considered in council's decision to approve this application.
Thank you. And a seconder, Counselor Petter? Ms. Hasler?
Thank you. The next zone change application is for lands located on the north side of Devonshire Avenue, and the property is municipally referred to as ten twenty-three Devonshire Avenue. The application for a zone change is to rezone the subject lands from neighborhood institutional zone to special residential zone three to facilitate the development of twenty-six townhouse units and four semi-detached dwelling units. The applicant is requesting site-specific zoning to permit semi-detached dwellings to reduce the minimum lot, excuse me, lot area, increase the maximum lot coverage, reduce the minimum rear yard depth, reduce the private outdoor amenity area, and with these reduced, or sorry, with the special provisions, this would facilitate the proposed development. As some council members may remember, on Monday night, we brought forward a different bylaw than what had originally been included in my report, and what we realized is that the applicant needed additional relief for the maximum block coverage, which would address the front porches that are enclosed. So, we would recommend that that bylaw be referred to as opposed to the original one. The proposed development has, or sorry, the applicant has indicated that each dwelling will be two stories and there will be six visitor parking spaces. Staff are satisfied that the proposal is consistent with the relevant policies of the PPS, as the proposed development is a form of infill housing and promotes intensification and provides a mix of housing types to accommodate current and future residents of the regional market area. Our office is also satisfied that the proposed development maintains the general intent of the official plan as it pertains to the medium-density residential designation.
of the official plan as it pertains to the medium density residential designation. The proposed townhouses with a limited number of semi-detached dwellings is a form of development that is contemplated by medium density residential policies and is considered to be compatible with the surrounding development in the area. With respect to the requested relief for lot area, lot coverage, private amenity area, and rear yard depth provisions, staff are of the opinion that the relief can be considered minor and will not negatively impact the development or neighboring property owners. It should be further noted that the city of Woodstock Building Department has requested an additional provision be included in the bylaw, which is included, which addresses the established building line, which in this area would be seven meters, but the applicant has proposed six meters, which staff are supportive of. In light of the foregoing, staff are supportive of the subject application and recommend
Council discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? Carries unanimous. The next item. Counselor Lauder, thank you.
I'll move that Woodstock City Council advise Oxford County Council that the city supports the application to amend the Oxford County Plan, official plan, file number OP17-03-8 submitted by Thames Developments Inc. to redesignate the subject lands from agricultural reserve and future urban growth to low and medium density residential neighborhood shopping center and open space to facilitate the development of a plan of subdivision on the said lands. And further, that Woodstock City Council approve in principle the application of Thames Development Inc. for the lands described as part of Lot 5, Concession 13, E.S.O.R. in the city of Woodstock to rezone the lands from Future Development Zone FD and Environmental Protection Zone 1 EP1 to Residential Zone 1 R1, Special Residential Zone 1 R1-18, Residential Zone 2 R2, Special Residential Zone 3 R3-12, Shopping Center Commercial Zone C2, Active Use Open Space Zone OS2, and Environmental Protection Zone EP1 to facilitate a plan of subdivision on the said lands. And further, that comments received from the public were reviewed and were considered in council's decision to approve the application in principle. And further, the Woodstock City Council advise County Council that they support the application of Thames Developments Inc. to create a draft plan of subdivision, file number SB17-03-8 for lands described as part of Lot 5, Concession 13, E.S.O.R. in the city of Woodstock, subject to the following conditions, and I think there are thirty-one of them. Is that right?
And a seconder, Counselor Acioni. Ms. Hashler?
Thank you. Apologize, this one, one might be a little bit longer. So, the applications for official plan amendment, draft plan of subdivision, and zoning bylaw have been submitted to, have been submitted to facilitate the development of a plan of subdivision. The subdivision will comprise two hundred and forty-four lots for single detached dwellings, ninety-nine lots for townhouse dwellings, a block for neighborhood commercial uses, a woodlot block, a park block, a stormwater management facility, and a number of local streets. The woodlot shown on the proposed plan is identified as a significant woodlot according to the county official plan, which the applicant is proposing to maintain. The official, the application for official plan amendment proposes to redesignate the subject lands from agricultural reserve and future urban growth to low and medium residential, sorry, low and medium density residential, neighborhood shopping center, and open space to facilitate the development. Those lands that are currently designated environmental protection will remain. For council's information, the subject lands are part of a larger area that was incorporated into the city of Woodstock from the township of E.S.O.R. Tavistock in July 2006. An area plan for the subject lands was initiated in January 2008, and the North Woodstock Secondary Plan was supported by city council and approved by county council in May 2009. A number of background studies to support the redesignation of the area were undertaken by Thames Developments, which own the majority of the lands within the area plan. With respect to the provincial policy statement, planning staff are of the opinion that the proposal is consistent, as the development is an efficient use of land and services within a settlement area. The development also provides a mix of housing types and densities required to meet projected requirements of current and future residents of the city. With respect to the official plan amendment to redesignate the subject lands to accommodate the proposed draft plan, staff are satisfied that the proposed amendment is appropriate, and generally consistent with the North Woodstock area plan. The purpose of the area plan was to develop a land use concept for the portion of the North Woodstock area with a view of fulfilling the requirements for the comprehensive review as required by the provincial policy statement. And so, and, and as I, as I indicated, staff are satisfied that the proposal is generally consistent with that area plan. That being said, it was determined through a review of the proposal that the residential component of the subdivision is proposing a lower density than the target density set out in the area plan. The area, or sorry, the draft plan is proposing approximately twenty-two units per hectare, whereas the area plan initially indicated that it would be twenty-eight to thirty units per hectare. Staff are supportive of this draft plan, though, as through discussions, it was determined that the density of the subject development could be supported, as the applicant has committed to providing a higher density in the future phases to the east, which will increase the overall density of the North Woodstock plan, or lands. I should also point out that a number of studies were undertaken. There is an environmental impact study, an environmental noise assessment, a traffic impact study, and a functional servicing report, which staff were all satisfied and have also included a number of conditions that would implement these different, the recommendations of these different studies. In light of the foregoing, staff are satisfied that the applications can be given favorable consideration, and we would recommend that city council recommend county council approval of these applications.
Thank you. Questions of council? Counselor Talbot?
Your worship through to Andrea, sorry. Due to illness, I wasn't here on Monday night, but I have to say that I was especially glad to see that the forest area was being kept in the proposal, especially after county council's meeting yesterday and the presentation by upper Thames, when to find out how much forest coverage we're losing every year, and it's at a greater rate than what we actually thought it was. So, it's nice to see that that was established and hoping going forward in that area, even though it might not have been identified, that the developers will understand the importance of woodlots and keep them into their plans.
Thank you. Further questions of council? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? Carries unanimous. And our next item. Counselor Tate?
The Woodstocks, sorry, the Woodstock City Council advised Oxford County that the city supports a two-year extension to the draft approval of the 207-2627 Ontario Inc. Subdivision for lands described as Part Lot 3, Concession 1, in the city of Woodstock to September 12, 2019.
Thank you. And seconded by Counselor Acioni. Ms. Hashler?
Thank you. This application was submitted for lands located on the east side of the Eleventh Line, and it's commonly referred to as the Hartley Farms subdivision. The applicant is requesting a two-year extension of the draft approved plan. I believe that they had, the plan was originally approved in 2012, and it was later extended in 2015, and it was scheduled to lapse in September 2017. Our office gave, granted temporary approval to January 31, 2018, and we are recommending that the application, or sorry, that the draft plan be extended to September 12, 2019, as we are of the opinion that the developer is making headway and has already registered one phase, and we're satisfied that they will continue to work towards that.
Thank you. Any questions of council? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? Carries unanimous. Thank you very much. Next item is consideration of correspondence. Counselor Tate?
I'll move that Woodstock City Council move one half of all funds from the 2017 year-end surplus into the Automation Reserve, and one half of all funds from the 2017 year-end surplus into the Reserve for Consultant Services, and this is for the Public Library.
Thank you. And a seconder, Counselor Lauder. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. Oh, Counselor Lauder? You've heard the motion. All those in favor? Carries unanimous. Next up, we will go to Administrative Services, the interim tax levy report. Counselor Pedder?
Move that Woodstock City Council approves the interim tax levy for 2018 and the necessary bylaw be approved.
And a seconder, Counselor Shapton. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? Carries unanimous. Next item, application for tax relief. Counselor Shapton?
Move by myself that Woodstock City Council direct the treasurer to cancel, reduce, or refund the taxes levied in 2015, 2016, and 2017, as detailed in the reports.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Lauder. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? Carries unanimous. Next item is the temporary borrowing bylaw. Counselor Talbot?
I'll move that Woodstock City, Woodstock Council authorizes temporary borrowing to a maximum of five million for the year 2018, and that necessary bylaw be approved.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Acioni. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? Carries unanimous. Next item is the Statement of Revenue. Counselor Acioni?
Move by myself, the Woodstock City Council received the Statement of Revenue and Expenditure and the Statement of Capital Expenditures for the period ending November 30, 2017, is information.
Thank you. And seconded by Counselor Lauder. Discussion? Counselor Shapton?
Thank your worship. I'm just wondering if Mrs. Hildery could give us an update as to where we're at right now.
Thank your worship through to council. Again, we are still in a very positive position. We're under, we should be at about ninety-one percent, and our, all our departments are in line with that, and many are under that. Thanks.
Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? Carries unanimous. Next up is the 2018 to 2022 capital budget. Counselor Lauder?
I'll move that Project 189 Devonshire Business Park Roads and Grading be financed with forty-four thousand from Development Charges Reserve Fund Roads and two hundred and forty-one thousand from the Industrial Land Reserve Fund.
On that motion? Counselor Acioni. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carries. And next motion? Counselor Shapton?
Move by myself that Project 693 Southside Pond Cedar Creek Improvements, including construction of a sediment four bay, be moved to 2020, or 2022, sorry.
Thank you. And seconded by Counselor Acioni. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And carries. Any further motions? Okay. Final budget motion for capital. Counselor Pedder?
I move that Woodstock City Council approve the 2018-2022 capital budget core program as amended, and the Director of Administration Services is directed to prepare the necessary bylaw for council consideration.
And seconded by Counselor Acioni. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? Carries unanimous. We now have a capital budget, so I guess staff won't get a long break this Christmas. They'll have to get started on 2018 capital. Next item, items to be carried over at year end. Counselor Lauder?
I'll move that Woodstock City Council approves the request to carry funds over the year end, as listed for various capital and revenue fund projects, and these funds be recognized as a prior year commitment or a reserve contribution as appropriate.
Thank you. And a seconder, Counselor Acioni. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? Carries unanimous. Next item is the bulk, where are we at here? No. Federation of Canadian Municipalities Grant Opportunity. Thank you. Counselor Talbot?
Move that Woodstock City Council authorizes the submission of an application for funding to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Municipal Asset Management Program for a road needs assessment.
Thank you. And a seconder, Counselor Pedder. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? Carries unanimous. Next item is the bulk item in Household Hazardous Waste Depot Operations. Counselor Tate?
I'm going to move for a referral for this report until we can get a full costing. Would it be for higher staff to do this, city staff?
And a seconder to that motion? Counselor Acioni. Discussion? Counselor Tate?
I want to take some responsibility for this coming forward, because we did do a motion previous that we asked for this to go out to tender. We directed the city engineer to go out to tender to get us this report. Coming back, just thinking about the big picture, we need staff for, the city's getting bigger for snow removal, grass cutting, everything across the board. I think we can probably utilize city staff, not just for the depot, but also for the other facilities we have and other maintenance around the city. So, that's why I'd like to see the cost. I know we're in a fight right now, too, with the county over our garbage and recycling programs, so I, I get the picture why we have to be cost-effective, but I also think we can do it and use the staff for other jobs.
Further discussion? Counselor Shapton?
Thank your worship. Along with the contracted out issue in this motion, I also have concerns with the fees being levied, as currently our residents are receiving the service at no cost. We're now asking them to bring it to the depot, and we're charging them on top of that. So, there's going to be some further questions that can certainly come forward, but I appreciate Counselor Tate for deferring this motion until we can get all of the facts. Thank you.
And I think I'd just make a clarification for some of the viewers at home. Many of the items in this report that are currently free would still continue to be free. Items that would have to be taken for special handling that would have incurred a fee in the past would incur a fee through this structure. So, in fact, it doesn't change much, other than you don't have to drive it to Salford. Counselor Shapton?
Thank your worship for your comments. I certainly appreciate that, but currently we do have some bulk pickup days where people can put that material out, and I think that we need to respect the fact that our citizens are, are still having that opportunity, irregardless of what they would have been charged for in the past. We also had household hazardous waste days where they weren't charged to drop them off in the community. They did bring it there, they weren't charged for that, and I believe we're doing away with those days because we have a facility as well. My goal is to have some free days so that it will equate to that. Not all of the time, but certainly an opportunity where if we're asking our residents to bring it there, that certainly we can achieve that.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carries unanimous. Next item on the agenda is the annual bedding plant order. Counselor Acioni?
Move that Woodstock City Council give notice of a commitment of twenty-seven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty dollars plus HST in the 2018 budget for payment for the supply of floral materials.
And a seconder? Counselor Tate? Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? Carries unanimous. Next item, the park naming. Counselor Tate?
Going to move that Woodstock City Council name the public park located at the intersection of Springbank Avenue and Halifax Drive, Leddington Park.
And a seconder, Counselor Acioni. Discussion? Counselor Tate? And Counselor-
Just some background. I had a conversation with one of the Leddingtons a few years back, and it came to my attention that they were one of the first settlers in Woodstock. The land that they purchased was where the McDonald's is right now, and currently one member of the family still has a business in that location. I didn't realize until talking to them, so I thought it'd be very fitting to finally name a park after that family.
Thank you. Counselor Lauder?
Just a comment through the mayor to Counselor Tate. I just wanted to thank her for getting, getting all this information for us, and I think this is a, is a very good choice, and so I look forward to seeing this park named that.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? Carries unanimous. Next item is the park regulations. Counselor Pedder?
I move that Woodstock City Council refer the report regarding the revised parks regulations to the bylaw section of the meeting, and further that city council authorizes the city clerk to make the necessary application to the Ministry of the Attorney General to seek approval for the proposed short form- for the proposed short form wording and set fines associated with the bylaw.
Thank you. And a seconder. Counselor Talbot. Discussion. Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor carries unanimous. Next item is the Piddock Public Land Review. Counselor Lauder.
I'll move that Woodstock City Council authorize the signing of a purchase agreement for the property known as P one, The Square, and P two, This Liver, for four hundred and forty-five thousand with the UTRCA. And further that city council authorizes city staff to negotiate a management agreement with the UTRCA for the day use area of the North Shore, P three, and South Shore, P four, or for, oh, five-year agreements in accordance with the general terms provided in the report. And further that the final management agreement be brought to city council for approval.
Thank you. And a seconder, Counselor Acioni. Discussion. Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor carries unanimous. Next item. Proposed purchase of four eighty-one to four eighty-five Market Street. Counselor Talbot.
Move by myself, or, sorry. I don't know where I am. I'll move that Woodstock City Council authorize the mayor and clerk to sign an agreement of purchase and sale with William Duncan for the purchase of four eighty-one, forty-five Market Street and the necessary bylaw be read.
Thank you. And seconded by Counselor Shapton. Discussion. Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor carries unanimous. Next item is the industrial land sale at Commerce Way. Counselor Pedder.
Move that Woodstock City Council authorize an amending agreement with Roger and Kathleen Croft, Ontario Refrigerated Services, Inc. for the sale of four point nine acres of industrial land for three hundred thousand.
Thank you. And a seconder, Counselor Acioni. Discussion. Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor carries. Next item is the extension agreement for purchase of sale at three eighty-one Dundas Street. Counselor Acioni.
Move that Woodstock City Council authorize the mayor and clerk to sign an amending agreement with HOC Holdings as described in the report.
And a seconder, Counselor Shapton. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor carries unanimous. Next item is the alternate member of upper tier council. Counselor Shapton.
Move by myself that Wood, Woodstock City Council refer the report regarding the appointment of an alternate member of Oxford County Council to the bylaw section of the meeting.
Thank you. And seconded by Counselor Pedder. Discussion. Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor carries unanimous. Next item is the annual status report on the accessibility plan. Counselor Lauder.
I'll move that Woodstock City Council approve the two thousand and seventeen status report for the two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and seventeen accessibility plan. And further that Woodstock City Council repeal and replace the accessibility technical guidelines with the accessibility technical guidelines document attached to the two thousand and seventeen status report.
Counselor Lauder.
Just a comment that I sit on this committee and I'd like to thank the members of the committee. They are there each meeting and they voice their opinions of things to, that should happen in the city in order to meet the legislation and make it more, our city more accessible to the citizens. And so I just think they've, they're doing a great job and I want to thank them for that.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor carries unanimous. Next up is the confirming bylaw. Counselor Talbot.
Move that the confirming bylaw be referred to the bylaw section of the meeting.
Thank you. And a seconder for that one, Counselor Acioni. Discussion. All those in favor carries unanimous. Next item is the bylaws. Counselor Talbot.
It's going to be long. Move by myself and seconded by Counselor Shapton that the following bylaws be given first and second reading. Ninety-one sixty-seven seventeen is a bylaw to repeal and replace the City of Woodstock Municipal Code, Chapter six 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 Parks Bylaw. Ninety-one sixty-eight seventeen, a bylaw to authorize the borrowing of five million. Ninety-one sixty-nine seventeen, a bylaw to provide for an interim tax levy. Ninety-one seventy seventeen, a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw number eighty-six twenty-six ten as amended, Z N eight seventeen twenty Montclair Drive. Ninety-one seventy-one seventeen, a bylaw to provide for the purchase of certain lands owned by William Duncan in the City of Woodstock, four eighty-one, forty-five Dundas Street. Ninety-one seventy-two seventeen. Sorry, a bylaw to amend the City of Woodstock Municipal Code by adding thereto a Municipal Code, Chapter zero zero nine, entitled Upper Tier Alternate Member Selection. Ninety-one seventy-three seventeen, a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw number eighty-six twenty-six ten as amended, Z N eight seventeen eleven Piddock Park Road. Ninety-one seventy-four seventeen, a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw number eighty-six twenty-six ten as amended, Z N eight seventeen eighteen Seagrave Road. Ninety-one seventy-five seventeen, a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw number eighty-six twenty-six ten as amended, Z N eight seventeen fifteen Oxford Road Four. Ninety-one seventy-six seventeen, a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw number eighty-six twenty-six ten as amended, Z N eight seventeen twenty-one Devonshire Ave. And ninety-one seventy-seven seventeen, a bylaw to adopt and confirm all actions and proceedings of the council of the corporation of the City of Woodstock during the period December sixteenth, two thousand and sixteen to December fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen.
Thank you. You've heard the motion. All those in favor carries. Counselor Talbot, the short version. All those in favor.
Inclusive, sorry.
All those in favor carries. All right. And tonight, we will start with Counselor Talbot.
Thank you, your worship. Before I get to the usual Christmas greetings, I just want to remind everybody about their recycling and about their garbage. The last couple of weeks, we've had numerous complaints with recycling blowing around the neighborhoods. We have had some very windy days and I know that sometimes when we put it out in the morning, it might not be as windy, but if we can take some caution and concern when we're putting out our recycling, just in case the weather changes, because it does have a tendency to blow all over not only your property, but everybody else's and it is sometimes hard to control. And also just a reminder that garbage is not supposed to be placed to the roadside until seven AM that morning. Yeah. So that's also something, but I've also had problems. I mean, we, we have a crow problem, you know, we, it just moves around the city. But if you place your garbage outside and it's not in a container, it's only in a garbage bag, in a lot of areas, especially running, on the edge of town, you attract wildlife into the area and it's not necessarily the kind of wildlife that you would like to have. So either put it in containers or if there's a possibility, if you have a garage to store it in a garage space, it's, you know, it's just consideration only for, because if you're going to have pests in your area, so are your neighbors. So it's just a consideration, but this last couple of weeks, there's been a lot of calls regarding that. So on to the, the good stuff. We've had a great year. We're coming to the close of another one. This is our final meeting of the year. I just want to wish everyone in the city all the best for a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, as well to our employees who have, are always out there doing a good job for us and to fellow counselors. It's been a great, great year. So Merry Christmas, everyone.
Thank you. Counselor Shapton.
Thank you, worship. Appreciate that. Just a couple of notes for me tonight. Want to remind everyone that the Salvation Army Kettles is in desperate need for volunteers again this year. If you wanted to call Bonnie at the Salvation Army, she certainly has lots of dates, times, and locations that I'm sure will work with most schedules. I know that myself and several other counselors have already donated some time and it's just, it's a great cause and certainly there seems to be more and more that need some help, especially at this time of year. The other piece I wanted to mention was snow removal. We had our first real snowfall this past week, although some may not call it a storm. We had enough snow that you had to get out and shovel your driveway and your sidewalks. I encourage everyone to be a good neighbor and if you have a snow blower, help your neighbor out. If you have some kids or you just really like shoveling, then just help someone out. It's, it's easy and it's better than trying to tread through snow that's all over and especially for seniors that maybe can't get out and do it or possibly couldn't afford to get out and hire someone to do it. So be a good neighbor. Other than that, I want to wish all the staff and my fellow council members and all of the constituents in the city a very Merry Christmas. No matter what way you say it, I hope that you're, you're able to spend time with your family and friends because that's what really matters. Myself and for my, from my family to yours, please be safe. And if you choose to drink and drive, I am very well aware that the Woodstock Police would more gladly have a spot to house you and the beds aren't very comfortable. We only order firm mattresses known as Concretes, so don't drink and drive, be safe, and enjoy the holidays responsibly. And again, enjoy it with your family and friends. Thanks so much and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Counselor Pedder.
I really have nothing to, to talk about tonight. I looked at the agenda and thought for sure we were going to be here three or four hours and I figured there's no way we're going to be able to go through too many comments at the end, but the mayor did a great job skating us through it in a reasonable time. Congratulations, mayor. I just want to echo the, same as the, my other counselors, Merry Christmas to everyone. Have a Happy New Year. Be safe, don't be in a hurry. Probably the biggest thing is not snow removal, it's people that are in a hurry. Just take your time, you'll get there eventually. I said ten minutes late, it's not that bad. So everybody have a good Christmas and we'll see you next year.
Thank you. Counselor Lauder.
Thank you. And I just wanted to mention too about the kettle. It's, it's a great thing to go out there and, and so many people come up and, and donate and they're so generous, so the help is really needed. And if anyone is looking for something to do over the Christmas holidays, check out the art gallery or the library and they've got lots of things that's happening. And the, the art gallery has a special announcement. I know this is early, but it is going to be exciting. The exhibition commencing November tenth, two thousand and eighteen is the Art of the Warner Brothers Cartoon, a fascinating behind the scenes look at how these cartoons are, were made. Bugs Bunny, the Coyote, Sylvester, and Tweety will all be in town, so it sounds like a great event. Wishing everyone a merry, very Merry Christmas and the best of the season. Thank you.
Don't forget Porky Pig. Counselor Acioni.
Thank you, your worship. Please remember that not everyone enjoys the holidays, so if you do know somebody that doesn't have a lot of family and friends around, please reach out to them and wish them Merry Christmas and maybe offer them a dinner or some company at some point in time. Also, I also like to say, please slow down, get your winter tires on, be, be smart when you're out there, let the plows do their job, let them get out there, stay off the roads for parking as well. Please be a good neighbor, help clear sidewalks, your own of course, but also those that need a little extra assistance would be greatly appreciated. I'll be at SoBe's tomorrow afternoon, two to four, doing the kettle, so anybody wants to swing by. Love to help contribute even more. So Merry Christmas, everyone, from my family to yours. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Tate.
I actually have a question for staff. Just wanted to ask Brian Connors if we could have a garbage can by the new recycling containers at the complex where the environmental committee put their.
Your worship, through to the council's questions, yes, I'm sure we can work that out.
Thank you. I said I would ask. And just, everybody have a very Merry Christmas and a great holiday.
Thank you. And I myself, I missed a few of the local friendly city traditions. I was away together with our SOMA partners on our Asian trade mission to China and Japan. And we had a lot of great meetings as well as making new relationships. We also continued to solidify with existing partnerships that we have already. And I know for myself, what I would say is for all the viewers at home, if you can encourage your children or grandchildren to learn another language, the opportunities in the future in Japan are tremendous for Canada. The Japanese culture looks at the same beliefs and work ethic that we have here in southwestern Ontario as something very similar to them. And with the large shift in demographics that is happening in the future, they're going to be looking for a lot of young, talented people that are looking for not just a cultural exchange, but a skills exchange and potential bright future. I know that there's a lot of good potential here in our region because of the fine people that we have. And at many of the site visits that we had for the existing facilities that we have in the city, they specifically speak to the amazing employees that they have here in the friendly city. So it makes my job as mayor very easy when you have such great people in the city that are leading and showing some of these world-class companies how to make improvements themselves. Now, after I returned here, I did get to participate in a Christmas dinner with the Sea Cadets and Navy Cadets, so that's the age group of eight to eighteen at the ship at Southside Park. Our police chief was there as well as other dignitaries like our MPP and the warden of the county. And it's something that I enjoy every year, seeing these young people go through a program that is completely free for them. So if you know anyone who could use a little encouragement and a little bit of guidance and might have fun learning a musical instrument or sailing or shooting a gun at the range, send them to the ship to take a look at the Sea Cadets. I also got to have another great Christmas dinner celebration at the Southgate Center. So I think between now and New Year's, there's quite a few more celebrations I'll be going to. So I think I'll be setting up the indoor trainer for the bicycle in January to make sure that the suit's still fit. So I am wearing my special Christmas tie for the viewers at home that couldn't see that. Oh, the zoom in is now. I'll stand up again. So it's a, an alien with a Santa hat and that's the one that the children pick for me because it's the only Christmas tie that I do own. So it's been well worn the last twenty-three years that I've had it. From my family to yours, Merry Christmas. And looking for a motion to adjourn. Counselor Acioni, seconded by Counselor Shapton. All those in favor? We are adjourned.